... May 12th and the time is 6:00, 2 PM. Due to COVID-19, Social Edition recommends consideration of the health of the village needs one of the residents. Please note that public comment will be allowed in the meeting and the public will be invited to make any comment. Anybody wish to submit that trying to public comment should contact me, per diar, one hour before the meeting. May I have anybody to call?
Okay. Moving right on.
Trustee Lawrence Mew.
Present.
Trustee Webster.
Here.
Trustee Tyson.
Here.
Trustee McFadden.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell and Trustee Smith is absent. Next on the agenda is the plan. Oh, also Economic Development, John Thompson Superintendent, you were driving, Code Enforcement, Leo Butler, Two News Director, Tip and Code Enforcement, Kimani and HR McCaskill. And Corporation Counselor from the Dale Goddard Group, may I have your sir?
Terry Casey.
Terry Casey. Next on the agenda is the plan for the meeting. Oh, and that's this girl.
Don't forget about my phone. Oh, you can't forget about me.
I pray that your reasons to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Butler, can you please say?
I'll do it.
Are you saying?
Lord GPC, I want some more conversation. Thank you for all that we thank you for. Everything that you've done for us, Lord, actually continue to lead us in the right direction, help us continue to move this town forward, let us continue to love one another and others, and just let everything go as planned in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Mayor, Trustee Mew is asking for line item 12 and 13 to be moved up right out of prayer in this executive session and approval items not in the executive session.
Excuse me.
12 and 13, right up under prayer. We'll go to executive session now and then come back, yeah? So they have to make a motion.
I'm making the motion.
Motion. Motion by Mew, second by Webster to move item. You want to say the items, Mr. Mew?
I'd like to move items on 12 and 13 up to the next item on the agenda of the prayer.
Trustee Mew?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee Mr. McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell and Trustee Smith is absent, foregiving. Need a motion to one take in the session.
So with that motion, maybe looking for a motion now to go into executive session. We're going to amend agenda to move 12 and 13 up right under four. No, but I'm looking for a motion to go. No, I'm just saying, you know, what the motion is for, and I'm looking. So I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session.
I made the motion to go into executive session.
I'll say. Group call.
Trustee Mew?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell and Trustee Smith is absent. And the time is?
6:07.
6:07 PM. For the record, Mayor, we can say what we want in executive sessions for pursuant to five ILCS, 1/23, two open meetings for the discussion of employment, litigation, personnel, real estate and labor issue.
Okay, so which one we going, go on first? Which item is we going, go in first?
Well, are we going in executive session?
Yeah. No, we're not in the executive session.
We're not in the session.
No, which, which items y'all want to go in first because for real estate, we will be talking with our attorney as well as a gentleman sitting, Mr. Dave?
Say one word when you get it.
It's for the real estate.
We do real estate, yes, and we can do personnel issues and.
After real estate?
That's fine.
Congress, can you please step back one minute? The real estate. Okay, um, we had, before I had discussed the call session, we had real estate issue. We did ask for American Kitchen, they did not come, so you have a letter of intent from LB Steel, that's the first thing you could call on.
So, Board, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, to accept, uh, the letter of intent from, uh, LB Steel.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Motion by Ms. McFadden, second by Webster. Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mew?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell and Trustee Smith. We have FOIAs and two absent. Next on the agenda is personnel.
Uh, is you back on? Ask Nate, did, uh, Trustee Mitchell join? Does she sent yet takes?
Trustee Mitchell was on. Was she?
Hold on, hold on. She wanted to be on.
I don't have feedback when I got up here, right? It's gonna be a feedback, right?
No, because she's not, she's not gonna be on that. 78? 95? 96? You say what? Hey, you don't have it all, so.
Seven twos.
Seven twos. Got you. Got you in the meeting, so. All right, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, next on the agenda, the plan.
Mayor, looking for a motion and a second to approve the termination of employee N.
Looking for a motion, uh, Board, uh.
I make the motion to terminate employee A.
I'll second.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mew?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? Trustee Mitchell? Four FOIAs.
Say FOIA. We are being excused, no, Mr..
So you said, you have to say something.
She said she's, uh.
You have to say something, yay, ne, abstain or something. That's right. That's right. And Trustee, um, Smith.
He's not here.
We got FOIAs, one abstain and one none. Abstain go with the majority.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda, you have approval of hiring a prime time code enforcement?
Did we come up with, uh? Do you come up with, with an hourly amount or whatever?
The only discussion that there was at this time is that, um, public court superintendent and, uh, the building, code enforcement department would like to share a fair book, so, no, it was still, it's still been working on.
Say to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, to the next meeting, okay. Approval of, we can go all together, the mayor is separate, the minutes from March 24th to April 21st, April 21st?
Looking for a motion to approve the minutes, the board amendments from March 24th, 2022 to April 21st, 2022. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm missing.
Motion by Mew, second by Tyson. Trustee Tyson. Trustee Mew?
You.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
And Trustee Smith. Trustee Smith is absent. We have FOIAs and one absent. Next on the agenda, we have, um, I'm sorry, we have to make your private commentary, we have the police department.
What do you have, uh?
Deputy chief.
Deputy Chief Smith?
Okay, um.
It's just like, you know, your summary of what you was on, like the calls and stuff.
Well, after the, uh, the ordinance was passed recently, uh, last month for the truck enforcement ordinance, uh, we have two officers who have been certified, updated certification for, uh, truck enforcement, so just to help combat some of the semi-trucks overweight vehicles coming through the Village of Dixmore, uh, they've been out there pulling more trucks over. But now we head to the local ordinance, uh, overweight vehicles, residential, uh, rate of $750, which is the maximum we're able to run. Now with these officers, uh, trained and with the help of the ordinance passed, uh, which has a state statute listed on there, these officers now, truck force officers, are now allowed to take these oversized trucks to the, um, scale. Uh, and now, that's when we can now depend on the gross weight, overweight, uh, and what the scale says, now the capacity will be more than $750, uh, it can actually go up to $10,000, $20,000, $30,000. Once that citation is issued, goes to Martin Courthouse, court, update comes in, we're issued probably like up to say by 80% of whatever the total value of that citation was. So that is in the works, uh, I will start doing spreadsheet on that, you know, just try to keep track of that. We just had two officers that were just recently hired, they have not started yet, uh, because of the scheduling, they were getting scheduled for June 1st, one officer, one investigator, and we did, uh, have two officers that were designed this last month as well, so. Pretty much that we have. We do have one vehicle that is, uh, that was recalled, uh, going squad cars, so it is at the, uh, Ford Motor on 147th and 6th Road.
You read, you said that, 'cause I was counting the cars, counting the cars. I was like, I'm missing, I'm missing. I've been counting, you know.
So we checked on today, uh, and they said that they still have it, like I said, so we were expecting to be there maybe like a day or two, so it's been three days now. So once that one comes back, we will send another one, just to keep up on the numbers and the readers.
Did you want to do your call sheet, or do you have it with you?
I do. Excuse me. So, I don't know if you all want to pop your this here, never you, you come, just do. So, as you know, uh, for like the last two, two months, I've been doing spreadsheet, uh, keep up with, uh, particularly numbers that the officers are out there producing, and I want to produce them like, you know, traffic stops, things like that, but keeping track of what they're doing, making the best, most out of their time while they're on duty. So for dispatch calls, seem like a little light, dispatch calls for the month of April, 168 calls, uh, reported, I don't know, 42, so those are the top, the amount of fish per day they written for the month. 12 accidents, so motor vehicle accidents, so there 12 of those, one felony arrest, and that was a subject with a gun, so that's just five misdemeanor arrests, those would be like domestic barriers or second barriers or assaults, things like that. 72 traffic stops, so they are out there pulling vehicles over. Out of those 72, there were 34 arrests told at traffic stops, was led to 80 traffic citations written, uh, 97 parking checks issued. Out of the 97, once said good, maybe 15, 20 of those were, uh, overweight vehicles, 1,142 permits checks for businesses, 22 vehicles towed, towed for the month of April. Total miles, 2,664 miles. That is the reported numbers of, uh, activities that the officers are doing.
Lord, let me first. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Butler, do you have anything?
Just want to say that, uh, for our code enforcement office, uh, we've got established with our office for our economic development and also the code supervisor, supervisor and the officer. We have computers that have been installed in our offices, we have tablets that have been issued and cell phones, uh, we've seen an increase of, uh, building permits that are being applied for and given, uh, we've had a turnaround time in less than 24 hours, and we've seen an increase of contractors working in the village and code compliance and working with the village and doing the right thing, so.
Well, we've had, um, absolutely $7,000, $7,000 that we invited to the village for building permits right now and, um, working on, uh, we have 10 houses that have been demolished, that need to be demolished, uh, torn down, and we have about 10 houses that need to be refurbished, uh, something like that, and we have a couple other houses that need to be, um, fixed up too, okay? And also, uh, we're concerned about 147th Street, that property over there, 147th Street, we're gonna check those houses down over there, um, we need to find out from the mayor and everyone else, but I think that's gonna be done. 147th Street along the strip there, um, right there, there's whole, uh, blue shop.
I was talking about the shops over there.
Yeah.
That?
And, uh.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be pretty much, uh.
Right.
You know, developed, so what, what we're doing now, the board is, uh, the boards, we gotta pretty much, uh, wait for the, uh, attorney's signal and John's signal.
Okay.
As to, to make sure that we have everything in place before we, uh, check down, so.
Yeah, we have some.
Probably got a little ways to go, probably at least another month before we can, uh, start out.
Okay. And we have open land that's, that needs to be developed, we have a lot of land now that needs to be cut down, that needs to be developed, so between that and, um, the money that we brought in, which is about $7,000, $7,000, man, that's where we are right now.
HR, you have anything else to say?
Um, so far as treasury support just concerned, um, the FYI 2017 budget, not budget, but audit is done, um, the treasurer is, we have to, the audit is gonna go over to the state and the county control, um, just need to get the go-ahead on who, who we're gonna give for 2018, 19 and 20, um.
HR, you have the treasure, you have an agreement from Gipper?
Not for, not for the, the new audits, no.
For 2017?
Yeah, for 2017, we have these agreements.
We already approved that.
But we didn't have 18 and 19, we didn't, we didn't approve that.
Okay, okay, so 17 been approved, so did, did he send a draft out? Trustees, you all have your draft?
Trustees have the draft.
The 17? Okay, so, uh, we'll get the action on once we pay them out, I think we have to pay them out, then he'll give us our action.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I, I have a question. We are concerned with 2018, 2019, 2020 and then 2021. Why can't we get 2020 done and work our way back?
Can't do that.
Why not?
Because everything gotta add up, we gotta lead up to it.
But you're not gonna get it to add up, it don't happen to get on.
Trustee, we still, we still gotta go that route, trust me, I would like to do that, I would love to do it, I was on the phone with the state yesterday and, uh, IEP A, uh, dealing with them yesterday, uh, the treasurer can tell you pretty much how I felt about it, but, I mean, that's just the way it go, so, we gonna get them that, although we know that it's nine out of 10 gonna be disclaimers.
All of them, so let's give them one in 2021.
No, we can't, you can't skip right there, you, you gotta show something, so we gonna show them what we have, which we don't have much because the last administration shredded, they hit a shred party here, so.
Okay, so.
We gotta, we gotta move there and get whatever we got to put in place, and we know it's gonna be what it's gonna be, and we gonna keep moving till we hit our mark to make it work. Uh, that's one of the things I'm going through with, with the, uh, IEP A right now, I'm dealing with that right now because they wanna have everything, and I, like I told them, I say, you know, we're not gonna have it, so what do you want me to do from this point? So what I'm gonna do, if things don't go right with you, and they not gonna accept audits, then I just gonna sit with their doorstep.
Well, you gonna, I get your pillow under the blanket, 'cause you gonna get there for a while.
Sounds good. I need somebody to donate a ten. We gonna do this.
My next question is for, we have to get these audits done. Have we talked to him to find out what he's charging? We need to know exactly what he wants to charge us and give us a date that they will be completed, not that him and him mom.
Part of the reason why it took so long, the 2017, 'cause he had zero to work with, made completely nothing, so what he gonna do, he started 17 now because he got whatever he was getting from that, he can move forward, so it's probably not gonna take long, but to have all of them done by the end of the year?
We need him to.
Might not hap, might not happen.
But we need him to tell us something.
Oh, he, he told us yesterday on the phone, he pretty, he, he said he can get on, but see the longer we wait, you know, or find the auditor, or let him do it, is the longer, the farther, how he's pushing us, so, my, just my thought, is just to let him, since he did 17, and did what he had to do there, he pretty much know what he gotta do for the others. If you get somebody else, then they gonna be trying to go farther back and it's gonna have us really messed up, so.
No, no, I understand that part, that's, that's not the question, the question is, is he going to give us a date? I, I need him to pinpoint a date for me, don't tell me whenever I get it done or I'm working on it.
He probably can, did you?
Can he do it? Can you get this 2018 audit done for me by May 30? If he says no, then when can you get it done? I want a date, I want something to look forward to, not just sit back and say, oh, well, I guess, well, maybe he gets around to it.
We're a trustee by.
I don't want that.
By the time you.
Give me something.
No, no, none of us want it, but at the same time, he can only, anybody that do an audit right now, trustee, for the Village of Dixmore, there's only so much they can do.
So, but can you finish it so much?
Pardon?
But can you finish it so much?
I couldn't tell you that.
That's what he needs to tell us.
Okay.
He needs to tell us.
The one, the one thing that we discussed yesterday, uh, looking at auditing and also the state, is that the biggest issue is, A, we have to recruit bank savings, right? That's A, but then we have to reach out to vendor to get information, and that's gonna be the same issue coming up, is that they have not did any accounting work since February 2018, so the people, the, the five treasurer, treasurers you guys brought in here previous to us, then you wouldn't even cut checks, they did no balances, no, no reconciliation, no nothing, so it's, it's difficult to do that without it, but then you all start to realize, the last audit that was done from Village of Dixmore was 2012, and the control was, you know, racist enough to wipe, you know, 13, 14, 15, 16, but he had to start from scratch, when I say scratch, meaning this audit is based off bank savings and whatever clerk and mayor he done over as far as the village group, and the tip is a whole nother one.
No, I mean, I, I understand that, but we cannot sit here and keep going on waiting to come see, we have to do something, it's, it's time for us to get up off of our behinds.
Trustee, we're doing all we can do. We doing, we, we doing all we can do, and the thing of it is, no matter who you bring in, I even told the state, they were up to come and do it, and they don't wanna be bothered with it.
They said no.
So, so what we tell them to come and do it, they don't wanna be bothered, I don't know how to do audits, and I'm not gonna put my name on doing a audit, not, not with them years, I mean, I go from when we, when this administration took over, but from them last administrations, ain't gonna happen. So, so what we have to do, uh, we'll talk to Tim and find out what his timetable could be, and go from there and find out what his price will be.
That's what we need to know.
Wherever you go, trust me, if anybody else do audits, it's gonna be much more than Tim because of it, that's a lot of work, when he start really breaking it down, I was like, okay, I kinda understood him, but we still pay him a visit to help him get it broken down quick, and I don't mind taking another ride, he's right up the street with us, so. We'll make sure it get done in timely fashion and the way it's supposed to get done, that's all, that's all I can say.
Okay, well, my other thing would be, for the 2021, we can get that done because we know what's up, and we can have that waiting.
Can't skip, you can't skip.
Y'all have to skip, just get it done and turn it in when it's due.
Trustee, you can't skip, trust me, that's, that, that's what me and the state and everybody said, you can't, you can't skip, you can't go like that, gotta go in order, it's all bad leading up to it, then it's all bad, but we gotta go in order. I wish I could've did that one before we did 17, but you can't do it that way. You can't do it that way. Any more questions?
Not on that one.
In reference to the shred party, is it, is documented?
It's documented, yes, yes. It was, it's in the full lease report, yes, it's documented. The shred party as well as the, uh, the hard drives missing out of computers and computers missing and the whole nine yards, keys and everything.
Right, not just documented, okay.
Yep. Next caller?
We have bills, May 12, 2022 on the bill.
Mr. McCaskill?
I need to get the bills, sir.
Are you computer? Get your computer down, man.
In the download.
You said what?
Didn't download, remember I told you, I showed you.
Oh, you want to download, right, what's, what's the figure on the bill?
So I added the, uh, invoice, you told us about the, the website, source digital, so it's a total of $177,434.48, uh, and the bulk of that is because for the City of Harvey, uh, for the month of April and May, the total 120,000 with agreement with the trust for $60,000 a month.
What's that, what's that number again?
Uh, 177,434.48.
Is that a thing for what we gave you for, um? We're asking the mayor, can we go? Mayor, we try to see what he talks about, right?
Who all trying to go?
Trustee Mew, point nine, Trustee Redford and Mayor Assistant.
And this.
And it's about, uh.
Economic development.
Did you see the brochure? Did you like it?
No.
We have a trustee like that?
No.
I, yeah, I, I, I was trying to, oh, wait, what, what, what? I was, you know, far, like, oh.
You have to stand alone, bro.
So it's a, it's a good thing?
Not going, stay in here. So it's four of you all?
It's four of us, and the total was, um, what was it, almost 8,000 pounds or something?
Yeah.
That's shocking, man.
The total?
I had nine files.
So just for, um, incidentals, things like that, obviously saying up to 11,000, usually break down the different, um, uh, per diem checks and all that other stuff that goes there, and I'd exceed 11,000.
So we'll be giving you all the information, you'll make it all the way?
Yes.
And as to go down and meet?
Take business cards, take the letter, we got a wheelchair, and bring information back to the board immediately.
Well, I don't care, vote, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
They wanna get rid of you when you quit. No.
Motion by Tyson, second by.
Don't look like that, too. Aw, man.
It was motion by Tyson and second by Tito. So can you give us a total for the, you want to do a bill list or?
Add that, add that to your bill list.
So it'd be, uh, 181,434. So it'd be, uh, one hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-eight cents.
One eight one four?
One eight, one, four, three, four, point four eight.
You know, let it say it one time? I'm just talking, I- We, uh, you got a course?
Yeah, ma. The bill is making sure that, um, the development that he was putting in, um,
Oh, it's down there, it's down there. No, he's not hit home tree?
Yeah.
It's probably right, it's right down here, it's in there.
It's on here, but I ain't, I ain't got the help.
That's what I'm looking.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah. I'm looking the seas in here.
And then he saves just, he just covered two lots.
Right.
Right now, the two by the, uh, community center. But just to piggyback a little bit, the one bill for the, uh, website, it was already three thousand dollars, and I think it was well worth, um, taking care of the outstanding bill from the last administration. Because, uh, they owed this young lady this money, she never got paid, she never received, um, any of the, uh, documents that she needed to move it forward. And when they transitioned, he found, he found out who to contact, how to get it going. So what happened is she sent me an invoice. I told her she send the invoice over, it'll be voted on tonight. So treasure don't go yet. I told her it'll be voted on tonight where, where I can get her paid for what she have done. She kept her word by sending me information plus. So we, uh, I would like for us to keep our word about taking care of her. Uh, she released everything that we needed, so. And some.
So it was motion by Tyson and the second by what? Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, absentee. You have five A's and one absentee.
So, who, um, did, did you, uh?
Trustee.
Ex- uh-
Trustee Tony Mitchell, would you like to go along, baby?
Uh, no.
No?
My, own time. Look out, doc.
I haven't heard anything out right now.
Next on the agenda, presentation, was Ann Marie Jean Landers, three regard to Dixmoor Public Library, is very presentation.
Sir, you up?
How you doing?
We can, we hit, we hit a concentration. Come on, sir.
Where I need to be?
In the middle.
Awesome.
I was in school, no.
Sir, first of all, thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it. Um, I promise not to take a lot of time.
Three minutes.
So, most of what I have to present is some things I think I'm learning while listening to the meeting. So I may have found the answers to some of these things, but we're trying to determine where this project stands because with the previous administration, we thought we had made some inroads. And we're also trying to make sure that we understand what the permit process in terms of the submittal is gonna be for the village of Dixmoor. So, um, I turned over a set of plans for the new code enforcers review, just to let them know where we stood. And I spoke to both Mr. Muse and with Mr. Butler briefly about that set. And, uh, one of the comments was that the area that we're proposing to put the library at one hundred forty-five oh one Davis Avenue, uh, is not zoned properly, but we filed for a variance underneath the previous administration. And so we were under the impression that that variance was on record and recorded. So if it is not, if we need to resubmit and reapply for a variance, we have no problem doing that. We're just trying to figure out where that stands. And then the other, uh, item was, under the previous administration, when we thought we had a variance, we moved forward and we get a preliminary submittal to Robinson Engineering. Uh, I saw on the agenda that there's something about coming to an agreement with Robinson Engineering. So we don't know if Robinson does third-party reviews for permit drawings, or if the village is gonna be doing the review, uh, for the drawings. So basically what we're trying to do is make sure that we do the right thing, and that we submit in the right way. Um, and we have some of the historical documents, if they're valid or not, we, we have no problem presenting them, uh, to the village. Basically, we're at a stage where we are ready to start looking for contractors, getting bids, and submitting for a permit. But because of previous administration and COVID, the job has kind of been interrupted. So we're trying to restart the wheel. And we wanna make sure that we do it the right way. We wanna find out what has been recorded, what hasn't been recorded, and if we need to refile, we have no problem refiling. That's really the summation of what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that we know what the permit process is for submittal and what we have to do to go forward.
Okay. Uh, one thing, I don't know what the previous adminis- I was a part of the previous administration, okay? Uh, and every time this issue came up, um, they went through and say, uh, well, you guys need to have these papers and them. I don't remember approving, it's just me.
I understood that.
Uh, but nevertheless, I don't know what inspectors looked at your paperwork. And did they look at it before, um, the board made a decision back here in, what, November? October, November sometime? I can't, I can't really recall. It probably was in February. Anyway, the board made a decision, six to oh, to, uh, table indefinitely. So when it get table indefinitely, that mean that it's really nothing that can be brought back up.
So I wanna make sure I understood. So when we have something that indicates-
You keep saying we, who is we?
Oh, I'm sorry. The, uh, Dixmoor Library Board. I represent them at this meeting. I'm the architect for the project.
Okay.
That's, when I say we, that's how I mean.
Okay.
And so I, I met with some of the board members, and we have some documentation regarding filing for a special use, and that it was, uh, Thursday, April twenty-fifth, uh, twenty nineteen. And that the board voted in favor of granting us a special use. So I don't know-
I don't, sir, again, this, the paperwork that you have, I don't know where you got it from. I don't know who it came from. And again, when they brought it, okay, you said twenty nineteen. She brought it to the board recently. Uh, and, and again, I mean, uh, it's your clerk with the, uh, board of trustees that brought it up. And the first time, a gentleman that used to be the president, who has resigned from the library board, I wanna say probably about a month ago, two months ago, they brought it up. It was table indefinitely, which mean really is an issue that we shouldn't even be talking about right now. It was table by the, uh, trustees. And Ms., Ms. Evans, uh, who was the clerk for the library, she should've told you that. She should've explained that to you, that it was tabled. So, I mean, I don't know where you'll go from this point. Uh, you might wanna speak with their attorneys. And they probably can kinda, uh, let you know pretty much what's what, that after something is tabled indefinitely.
Can we get a copy of the document where it was tabled, so that we have that as a record? I, I assume that's a matter of public record?
Uh, can we give, uh, the attorney's, uh, phone number, where he can, in terms of get in touch with it, with the attorney and go from that way? You might not wanna give it to him out that way, but he, he, he can, uh-
But then, so the way I understand it is that effectively the project, the, the village is not in favor of putting together a public library at that location.
Sir, again, all I can tell you is it was table indefinitely, so. I couldn't really, uh, totally know on that. The trustees tabled it indefinitely. Uh, so that's where it was. And, and, and before, um, the library board sent you out here, they already knew that it was tabled indefinitely.
No, I understand. I, I'm just telling you what I was handed as record documents. I don't consider them the forgeries in that way. I'm not trying to represent that. It's just that if something's been tabled indefinitely-
Well, see, it's a, it, it's a lot of stuff that's been going on around here with the last administration, where they've been doing stuff that the board was not even aware of. And I say that for a matter of record, clerk. I can put that down. It's been a lot going on that the previous trustees was not aware of. And I'm sure some, some of you will be hearing about it, uh, in the news wants to state, and everyone come in and
Well, I guess I would close with, I, I hope that at some point, even if it's not at that location, that we can move forward and create a public library for the village of Dixmoor. We, we would understand that to be a benefit to the village, um, if for no other reason than the health of the education of the young residents, but indefinitely, hopefully it's not forever, because forever is a long time.
If, if you would like to leave a car, um, and if it come up where they won't do a library or something, maybe we can, uh, maybe we call in for drawings or so forth.
We have drawings on file. Uh, I look forward to the information about the attorney, so we can make sure that we understand what's going on. I, I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
I approve of amended dog ordinance?
Uh, the approval of amendment of dog ordinance is, uh, the only thing that was amended on there is that when you have vicious dogs, um, or just big dogs in general, I think it's any dog over fifty or sixty pounds, you really need a six-foot fence up, something to try to keep the dog behind that fence, because, um, we hear a few cases where dogs actually got out of a small fence and actually mauled, uh, some of the residents. So, uh, we're trying to get these orders, uh, in place where they be behind a six-foot fence. Something to help us kinda keep it level and prevent them, they won't be able to jump over this six-foot fence. So I'm looking for a motion to, uh, amend the dog ordinance to a six-foot fence.
Can I ask one question on that? What is, is it a large dog?
You got, you got, you got, you got a motion a second, then we can run.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Okay, discussion.
I wanted to ask, uh, is it just large dogs, or those that are considered vicious, how large?
Well, small, well-
Look, man, you, you gotta pitch an understanding.
I think they have, I think they- Large dogs.
Just large dogs?
Yes. Rogue caller.
Oh, I just wanted to say, I had to put Hanson down the other day.
I'm sorry, we had to put Hanson down.
I hear, I'm not here.
That's the one that beat me. But anyway, uh, rogue caller.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee West? Trustee Tyson? Trustee McFadden? Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Trustee Mitchell?
Okay, thank you.
You got four A's, one absentee, and one absentee, once you hear it.
Okay, next one, Anthony.
Next on the agenda, we have an ordinance setting the P M board on violation of Bible trust. We did approve that at the last meeting. Um, approve-
Oh, that need to be stripped off, because that's something that was always done on, I didn't get back on here.
We just, um, if there's approval qualified out of the village of Dixmoor finance, we just wanted to ratify and say that there was like a phone call, and so actually, yeah, we should go motion in a second to approve that, just for having it, we have to.
Prove.
The phone call that I done. Avoid all the one forty yes, uh, states.
Yes.
I just want to put it on the record. Next was approval of an agreement with Robinson Engineering.
This is, uh, this is something that we need to vote on, uh, for Robinson Engineering, where they continue to, uh, work with this, uh, water issue that we have in the village of Dixmoor. Uh, they've been doing a great job of representing us. Um, Melanie, uh, which works for Robinson Engineering, she has been doing an excellent job of getting us, uh, meetings set up with the state, the county. And, uh, she's still working very hard to try to get a lead, a, a lead base piping done as well as I'm getting. So, uh, this is just, I'm looking for approval to continue, uh, working with, uh, Robinson Engineering. And, and, and board again, I always be open to you guys, because really it's falling under the water emergency act. But I always still bring it through to you guys, uh, because I'm gonna be open much as possible. Of course, I know you don't want that water issue going down. Yeah, sir.
So, oh, we need to make a motion.
Yeah, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Um, I need a second back.
Yes, discussion, yes. So is, is this just a continuation of our previous agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. So none, none of the terms or anything?
None of it changed.
Changed, okay.
Trustee Tony Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee West?
Yeah.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
And trustees will be at five A's and one absentee. Next on the agenda is approval proposal for home retrieve service.
You move to- Okay, okay. Basically, it's for the, it's for the, what, what we are trying to do is, uh, Tyson, you hear from you.
Oh, it's on your back first, and then I'm jumping in. He gonna say, two, ten seconds like you already did, I'm jumping. No, go ahead. I, I ain't saying that.
Be quiet.
About trees. Okay, well. No, it was brought to me that, that they had, where we got a couple of areas by the community center, where we cut down and visual from Wood Street and right across, there's a, um, lot of trees and, you know, just a bad-looking area right across the street from the community center, which needs to be laid down. It's a hidden parking lot there. It's, doesn't feel safe already, you know, not to go into the negative part. Just excited to see that that thing opened up, leveled out. Just a beautiful sight, you know, hopefully we can do a new park and certain things like that, but this is the start, where it can start to look like a clean, just an open look, and just excited to see that this is even possible to happen. Both sides, you can see it from both sides of the main street, maybe get a big sign up and everything. It'll start to look like a, a area where it's safe for kids and people, you know, coming into a community.
No, 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 this is not, this is, uh, John, John that was getting the grant for the trees on spark. This is something that the village has, that the village, uh, need to take care of for, for, uh, number one, for the safety. This, the tree area behind the, uh, youth center, where, uh, where the new homes is, that area there be cut down. Of course, we all remember we had an incident, where the guys actually ran up in there and got away.
We'll never forget it.
Uh, also across the street, that keeps who people is coming out. Number one, you can have it, probably have it where people can actually park up there, uh, where cars will be all through the street, maybe you can't get through. Number two, it'll help where we can see for safety reasons, to make sure don't, no one be in there waiting for somebody to come out and get shot. So, uh, basically what we're gonna do with that, we're trying to engage with the, uh, tree company here, where they can come out, take care of that issue. Uh, we, we have a, I think, the treasury was not gracious. So what we do, we're just looking for your permission to, uh, start engaging. Uh, by the next board meeting, we are pretty much- By the next board meeting, we'll pretty much have the complete figure of what we're looking to, uh, pay that as we're done. Hopefully, we can get it done reasonable because at the same time, the village is pretty much. So, with that said, we're looking.
I'll make a motion.
Road call clerk.
Trustee Weston?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mills?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustees will be at five days and one absence for tree services. Next on the agenda, we have approval of business license for J Mac Enterprise. You want to speak about that? You'll make the motion a second and then speak about it.
People's opposed, uh, this is your, uh, Jason.
Someone is on the Zoom on that.
We don't have to talk, we don't have to talk. We don't have to talk.
Tell me, tell me, hold on, we're let, the inspector talk, then we're, let him talk, then we're. No, but you know what, uh, okay, so here's the thing. First of all, I'm looking for a motion to accept it. And then, I mean, I'm looking for a motion for J Mac, uh, trucking. And then we're going to discussion and then trustees can come on whatever vote they feel they need to do.
I'll make a motion.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Yes, sir.
Motion by me a second by Webster.
Okay, discussion. Go ahead, uh, sir.
Uh, yes, I am Jason. Um, I own J Mac Enterprise. I would like to put, I'm trying to get a business license to put a small truck repair shop in the old Marsh Trucking property. The address is, uh, one forty-three twenty-six on Wood Street.
Wait, what?
Or rent from, I would like to rent from Alex. Uh, I do know there's some things that need to be taken care of with the property before occupancy could happen. I just want to make sure that I would be able to, if I was to go further with renting the building from him after all the work they've done, I, I want to know if the village will allow me to put my truck shop in there.
Okay, uh, are you through, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. For that particular location, it's an isolate. It looks terrible. I would not vote for giving him a license until it's been cleaned up. It has to be cleaned up first before I would venture to give him a license. We give him a license now, he don't have to clean up anything. It should be cleaned. If he's renting it, let the owner go out there and clean it, or he cleans. I don't care which one, we get it cleaned. That looks terrible running down Wood Street, running down hundred forty-third street. It's horrible at that point. You know what? It, it looks horrible. No. Then you bring more trucks in there to make it look even worse? No, sir.
So, with that being said, uh, this is the code enforcer, uh, Cleo Butler. I talked to Mr. Jason and he has agreed along with the owners, uh, contingent on getting the license for the business to ensure that they repair or replace the fencing that's there and to clean and remove all the rubbish, to level up in the parking lot because elevation is too high to make sure the drainage doesn't go to Wood Street. So there are some things in place, um, and we won't end with that. When we get ready to go in, before the license is issued, we'll do a total inspection to make sure that everything is safe and pleasing to that.
Okay, so, uh, what's his name?
Jason.
Jason.
Mr. Jason?
Yes.
Okay, so the take that the, I believe I can speak for the board. The take that the board has right now is that, you know, it wouldn't be a problem you getting your license, but before you get your license, you must come into compliance with the, uh, code enforcer. You know, far as like cleaning it up and doing whatever need to be done. I'm sure that y'all sweeping him already?
Yes.
Okay, they have already spoke with you on the issues? So if you can take care of that, uh, I'm sure you wouldn't, you, you wouldn't have a problem with the board. Can I, does that say, does it say board? Okay, I'm sure you wouldn't have a problem with the board if you come into compliance with, uh, taking care of them issues that they have before you.
Okay.
So now, what, what, what we, what we probably, what, what we probably could do, I mean, it's up to you all. We can vote to give him the license pending, pending him taking care of the issues to satisfy what the village is looking for as well as the code enforcer. Would that be fair?
We need to put a timeline on it.
Well, you, as far as the time limit, he can't get his license till it's done. So, that's his time limit. You see what I'm saying? I, I, I think. Uh, so, uh, board, the motion will be tonight to accept Marsh Trucking Company. Is it?
J Mac. J Mac Enterprise.
Pass me.
J Mac Enterprise.
J Mac Enterprise, uh, to move forward pending the, uh, issues that's, uh, going on over at the, uh, yard. So, what we, what I'm doing, I'm looking for a motion. I'm looking for, okay.
It was motion by me, it was second by Webster.
No, but it wasn't, it, it wasn't in that format.
I'm going to go back and say pending.
Pending them taking care of the issues per the code enforcer before they get their license.
Trustee Mills?
Yes.
Trustee Weston?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
And trustee will be at five days pending they take care of issue code enforcement. Once you hear it. Next on the agenda is approval for other business license for astonishing gift event, and that's up there in the town center. Uh, the issue she have is that she can't get a contract until the board approves. So you can say pending and she have to bring the contract back. So you can say pending, pending her, um, contract with them. And everybody got a copy of what she's, you know, what's going on up there.
Right.
Okay, so board again, looking for a motion to approve business license for astonishing gift event. It, uh, located a hundred forty-fifth and. Western town center.
And that just for the record, pending she have a contract.
Pending a contract, but she can't.
Right, and pending a contract with. She just had to have something from the board.
Yes, yeah, yeah, what, what she doing it the right way? Come to the board before she spin up on the show. So looking for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
Road call.
Trustee Mills?
Yes.
Trustee Weston?
Yes.
Trustee Smith? Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Five days and one absence.
Hey, thank you, board. Citizens come in.
You already done your approval of letter of intent regarding the village of Dixon, so you can say you been a little bit too.
Uh, the board approved, it'll be still. For the, uh, letter of intent contract. So thanks, board. Okay.
Next on the agenda is citizen comment.
There are two people on right now, and they are all good.
We're, let Nate know we have citizens come in if they want to.
Nate knows.
Uh, yes, sir. Is there any members of public, I don't know if I have a moment, would like to participate in citizen comment? Please unmute yourself this time.
Hello, hello?
Hello?
Yeah, okay, I want to participate. It's impossible.
I believe you have the floor.
Oh, hello, I can't see anybody on the screen. Uh, can you hear me? Can anybody, can they hear me?
We hear you loud and clear.
Uh, hi, everyone. This is our leader, Evans. Uh, Mayor, on our, on your, uh, February twenty-fourth, I think it was, uh, meeting, when I came before the board, I remember you tabled, go up, tabling us having, not having our meetings at the, uh, village hall, you know, table that forever. But if you recall, you explained to me exactly what I had to do to come before the board again. If you remember our conversation, you were telling me about your house and how you had to get the blueprint together. And because the little paper that I had said it really didn't mean anything. So we got our architect, he gave, uh, Mr. Mills the, uh, blueprints. So what we're doing, we're following basically what you said. Uh, I don't remember you tabling anything because if you recall, I re, I reported that meeting. So, but I don't remember you tabling anything about that situation. So now, I'm kind of confused because we followed everything that you told us to do. So, uh, maybe we can talk again, but I don't, I don't recall you tabling that part. I remember you all, you all, that list don't want us to have our meetings at the village hall. We know that. But I don't remember you tabling us building a library for, for the residents, uh, in the village of Dixmore. I don't remember you all tabling that. Like I say, I have the recording and I will listen to it and maybe we can talk discussions later, but, uh, I don't remember that. I'm just making that statement.
Okay, well, what we do, we check, uh, we check the records, but I remember you coming.
You recall, you told me about the house. I mean, we had like a, any of the meeting before, before I was at the meeting. We, we had like a talk and you told me exactly what to tell my architect to tell the code enforcer. And that's exactly what I did. And, and then the code enforcer, or what our architect said, the code enforcer, Mr. Mills, told him to come to the village meeting. So now I am totally confused.
Okay, well, maybe Mr. Mills wasn't here when it was tabled. Uh, so I'm confused also. But at the same time, when, when I talked to you, I spoke with you in office with, uh, my assistant concerning the issue. And I said, well, maybe if you do this, see, I don't care vote, okay? And I don't believe that the trustees do not want to see a library come in, but if certain steps have to be followed. We spoke on this a number of times, a number of times. This, this wasn't your, I mean, you've probably been here about five or six times already.
That's right, and.
We, we, we're with the same issue, we're with the same issue.
Is, we, we, uh, the board voted on the bearings. We have the bearings, okay? So we say it's not, we can't build in a whole one area, but we have the bearings.
If the board wants.
What else do we need? What else do we need? We have everything else in order. We gave you the blueprints.
What more do you all want?
If you can tell us what, what, what it is.
Number one.
We'll definitely get.
Okay, Ms. Evans, Ms. Evans, Ms. Evans. Number one that was tabled. Okay, let the clerk, I'm going to talk with the clerk and have a pull out. But that, that don't mean it's going to change the board mind, okay?
What, what, what problem is that the board have, I don't get it.
Right, right, right now.
I don't get that. You don't want a library. I don't.
Ms. Evans, Ms. Evans, right now, due all respect, it's been writing three and a half minutes. So, so for a matter of record, I did not state that we didn't want a library. So with that said, your time is, has expired and, uh, maybe you can talk later.
I don't, okay, thank you, sir, thank you. I understand, like I said, we turn all our paperwork in. You know, it's nothing that we need to do except get a contractor.
Okay, Evans, okay, thank you. Anyone, anyone else? Mr. Nate, is there anyone else?
If there's anybody else in the table, like participate in the comment this time?
Yes, this is Marnay Yarber. I just want to, um, request if the village can utilize the village of Dixmore website for communication on some of the ongoing projects, especially, um, my main concern is, uh, regarding the water damage that happened, the cleanup, and what's going on with the funding. If there's a way that the residents can be aware, I understand you probably can't do mailers, but I do see that there is a village of Dixmore website that doesn't seem to be utilized because the, uh, previous mayor, I think it's still, uh, information there.
Okay.
Just one comment, um, I just want, uh, the noise, the loud music, um, if, if that, that could just be addressed in the neighborhood.
What is your, uh, we do have, uh, noise ordinance in place. So, so, uh, the officers, they are working on it. So what area you locate there?
Field, hundred forty-second and Marshfield.
One forty-two Marshfield? Okay. Okay, so.
And the firecrackers, I mean, it's, it's kind of happening, but now that as, you know, we get closer to the holidays, it's, you know, it's going to rip up. But, yeah, the music and the firecrackers for sure.
Okay, uh, what I do, uh, I address that issue with the, uh, police department. And I know you probably have my phone number already. Uh, but I will be addressing that issue with the, uh, police department for you. That's no problem.
And utilizing the website for updates and information is bad, is not feasible?
I'm glad, I, I'm, I'm glad you, uh, brought that up. So just to let you know, the website, is it, uh, is it up?
Yes, it's up.
Okay, so, so the website is up now. Uh, we just got control of the website today.
Oh.
Yes, because the last administration, they walked out with everything. So we just got it up and going today.
Okay, so we can look forward to having just some updates, what's going on in the community, how we can address things together as, you know, as a community.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, we can.
All right.
And I appreciate you calling in today.
Thank you. That's it for my comments this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. God bless. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have, we have, we have, we have one announcement. All right, we have one and a half announcements. Okay, we have announcement by, uh, trustee, uh, Mills, and then we have a half announcement by, uh, trustee Tyson.
So I'm going to speak on behalf of Superintendent Dern. I'm sorry that he had to leave this evening. Um, but I did speak with him today and discussing, we discussed on our Monday meeting about doing a cleanup for the village of, of cleanup week or day, whatever. So he has some ideas about the date that he would like to do it based upon his time that he had available and, um, his manpower. So he suggested the week of the twentieth to the twenty-seventh. Um, so I don't know if we need to further explore that, but, um, he wants to go ahead and that's the case to get our fire, get fires out between the fifteenth and sixteen.
Twenty, twenty-seven, sound good.
Okay, and then he would work on, um, give a couple dumpsters and on.
Different locations.
Different locations, um, and so. Different locations, um, and so the fire, well, we discussed what would be on the fire. Uh... And in addition, well, he wanted to ask and inquire about some help.
Yeah, there's some, there's some we'll be looking into also, probably for the next board meeting, uh, because he, he will be, he, he do need help, I know, we will, he do need help. He's a superintendent and, I mean, he's, need him and I know my trustees, I ain't gonna say one trustee, but all of us. We always jumping out there and we doing what we gotta do for the village.
Trustee.
I ain't talking about my clerk, I ain't talking about you. But, uh, she take care of a lot of the inside stuff because we don't allow her outside. She like, she like, she like, she like sugar, I don't want, I don't want her to get wet and melt.
Sorry, do you want me to call you and start running up and thinking to help us?
Uh, yes. She is, she is, uh, okay, are, are you through, trustee Mills?
I was, I was done, I was mainly just keep trying to get an idea that works for everyone as far as the twenty to the twenty-seven. The goal was to get it done before the, um, Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Um, and before we be too far into the summer, so...
He's the superintendent, so guess what, he drive a backhoe, and he drive a backhoe and the bobcats and all that, so...
And I can tell you, he lose his five thousand dollars, I can say it's condone, he lost his five thousand dollars.
I know, that was it.
Okay, so now I have trustee, no, I'm tripping, I'm tripping ahead, no, go ahead, y'all.
Uh, but first, I like that idea, we definitely be a part of that. Um, the football organization, Dixmoor Vikings, uh, slash Robin Eagles have been selected to play at the Bears Stadium on the twenty-second, on the big screen, so...
So, do we get chicken?
Uh, yeah.
Twenty-second of May?
May. I know, but that's why I said, let me, let me make this happen. Cause the girl's going that way to the guys.
We'll do football.
And maybe we can put it on the website. But that's a good, it's, it's always, yeah, a great experience, it's a Sunday.
One other thing, uh, to everyone, I would like to, uh, oh, what are you doing, sir? Go real quick, I would like to, uh, thank the county, uh, mosquito abatement for what they are doing for Dixmoor. Uh, they've been trying to do for years, collect tires. We got over, we have over probably eight hundred tires. So, I spoke with, I, 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 I really, uh, Ms. Janet, Janet Rogers. And I called her, she said, oh, we must been on the same page. So, I was trying to figure out how to get rid of the tires. Tires now, regular car tires cost three dollars for pro tire to get rid of, truck tires are twenty dollars. So, like I said, we got over nine hundred tires. But God blessed us, where I got with her, she gave us a, uh, paper to fill out for mosquito abatement to get rid of tires and some type of grant that the county have. And guess what, next week, they come to pick up all the tires we have, uh, as well as, yeah, I know in that field. We, uh, her is on it. And then she also stated and told me that, you know, don't let the tires accumulate. We get like, see ten tires every now and then, just bring them to us, so we, we gonna get rid of this mosquito issue with the tires. So, with that said, no one else have anything to say then for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
Roll call, clerk?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mills?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Tyson? Trustee Smith? The time is? Eighteen APM.